All right, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We will have our invocation by Bishop Donald Battle of Divine Faith Ministries in Jonesboro, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will ask our Veteran of the Month, Retired--
Edna M Cosby.
Yes, is she here?
Here.
Oh, all right, there you go, all right. Retired Technical Sergeant Edna M Cosby, the leader of some Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Thank you.
You look like you could be here a lot.
Did I do something wrong? Is it time to pray? Let us pray. Most heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful opportunity to be here in this wonderful country of the United States of America. We thank you for this state of Georgia, which we reside, all the citizens that reside here. We thank you for it. We thank you for this commission tonight. We thank you for Dr. Anderson, Chairman Turner, and Gail, and Felicia in her absence, and of course, DuMont Davis. We pray for them and their families and what they are doing, that they are making a difference. We pray for all the leaders, knowing that our responsibility is great, so as we go, goes our community. Our people are hurting. We understand now that sometimes when we look, we have to realize that the times are different now. Dr. King says poverty is nothing new. What's new is that we have the money now to fix it. We have the people, we have the people in place who can do it, who are anointed, who are smart, and we can achieve. I heard in the news today that in Atlanta, the average black household is $25,000. The average white household is $86,000, a gap that's too wide. So God, we ain't got time to argue and fuss. We need to be about the people, to help them, to achieve. We thank you, Lord, that, that you're gonna do a good thing. Let our leaders think big. Heard today that Atlanta was buying Number Two Peachtree where my wife worked, where I used to go and kiss her between shifts. Atlanta buying that today, and the only purpose in that building is to bring about a change to this gap. So I thank you today. I pray that we have the greatest year, 2023, that we move forward, and that we achieve that unachievable. Thank you for me having this long prayer to get this meeting set up. I thank you for it, and with a excuse when I leave, because my wife is out there and we have another appointment. I thank you for it in Jesus' name. Amen? 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 Will y'all give Jesus a praise?
Thank you, Bishop. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our February 7th, 2023, regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments?
And before I take those requests, I just wanted to notify everyone that Commissioner Franklin is joining us via live stream, so she is able to take part in this meeting. Are there any additions, revisions, deletions? I know I got item 11 here, Resolution 2023-32. I think you said it was number 10, but it's number 11.
It's number 11. Mr. Chair, it's the item that is in your agenda book. The agenda is correct, but the resolution in your agenda book is not, so the one that is on your dais is the correct agenda. There's no change to anything, just letting you know.
So we're just bringing notice that it's different in the book than what it is here. Are there any others?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
Mr. Chair.
Can you hear me?
Okay, can we hold item 19 until after executive session? And then also, item 18, I think it's 19, no, I apologize, 19 is the one, but also, item 16, I have some questions about it. I really would like to have this removed from the agenda.
Item 16, Resolution 2023-37, grant special facility use requests to a community affair. Are you requesting that to be removed from the agenda altogether, Commissioner Franklin?
Well, the bottom line is, I would prefer to have it removed, but if I need to just have it on the regular agenda, that's fine for discussion.
Okay, so what's your pledge?
See, we'll go ahead and remove it. If it doesn't, if I don't have enough votes to remove it, what are my options? I can still leave it on the regular agenda.
Okay, Commissioner Franklin's motion is to remove it from the agenda. Is there a second?
I second it, sir.
Any questions? Those in favor, I. I oppose. It's unanimous. Any others?
What, hold on, excuse me. Commissioner Franklin, what about number 19?
We held that until after executive session. That was my request.
I need a motion.
Yeah, that didn't need a vote.
It doesn't?
All right, there's no others than a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, I. Opposed. It's unanimous.
Our next item is Veteran of the Month.
All right, as you have saw, our Veteran of the Month come running up here, so she is Johnny on the spot. She is ready, still regimented. All right, so our Veteran of the Month is Technical Sergeant Edna M Cosby. She began her military career at Lackland Air Force Base in San Antonio, Texas, on May 13, 1981. After basic training, Technical Sergeant Cosby was assigned to Lowry Air Force Base in Denver, Colorado, for training to become an inventory management specialist. Her first duty assignment was to the 314th Airlift Wing Supply Squadron in Little Rock Air Force Base in Jacksonville, Arkansas. After completion of duty at that base, T. Sergeant Cosby was sent to the dream assignment of a lifetime at Helican Air Force Base in Athens, Greece, to the 7206 Air Base Group. After completing the assignment in Greece, Technical Sergeant Cosby transferred to the active reserves and was assigned to the 94th Airlift Wing at Dobbin's Air Force Base in Marietta, Georgia. Upon her transfer to active reserves, she was assigned to the 94th Airlift Wing Financial Management Office, in which she completed her AAS in financial management from the Community College of the Air Force. T. Sergeant Cosby was NCOIC of the Training Program for FMO, and yeah, I don't know what that means.
Financial management?
There you go, Financial Management Office, in which she developed a training program customized for each trainee. Her work in this area earned her a Meritorious Service Medal. T. Sergeant Cosby retired from the Air Force Reserves in 2003 after 22 years of service. T. Sergeant Cosby is a member of several service organizations in the local area. She is a member of the National Association of Black Military Women and was chairman of the Assistant Living Care Program for two years. During her tenure, she established guidelines for committee processes and created the organization's standard operating procedures. She is also a member of Veterans Helping Veterans, in which she serves as the co-chair for the membership committee. She also volunteers her time with Waypoint Veterans Center as a Veterans Services Officer, in which she assists veterans of all services in obtaining benefits due to injury while on active duty. She loves volunteering her time when needed, and also loves traveling with her husband, Vincent Cosby. She has two sons, William and Miles, who are currently serving in the United States Air Force. Please help me to recognize and to honor Technical Sergeant Retired Edna M Cosby.
Mr. Chair, the next item is the approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hambrick. Motion was made by Commissioner Davis. Are there any questions on any other items?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, on number 10 regarding the elections, and I did talk with the COO, and there was no distinction between the sheriff's race and the state house position. So I'm assuming, and I hope this is correct, that both of those elections will be on the same day, same early voting, same locations as far as the state house is concerned. Am I correct?
Good evening. Yes, the Secretary of State was gracious enough to allow us to hold both elections at the same day. They initially had stated that they were gonna do it for the 7th, but understanding we were one of the few counties that have a special election on the 21st, they allowed us to move it on the 21st, so both races will be held on the 21st and could be held simultaneously.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would like to have a total of the amount that is spent of our item two. I believe item two is GSO 7F171GA, and it says that it's an amendment, but I just needed to know the total cost so far from my records.
Is this for the fencing?
Yes, just wanted to know the total cost.
Ms. Carroll, you have that number four.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Franklin, are you looking for the information outside of the $23,000?
Yes, it says this is for an additional, so I just, it doesn't reference what's the total. And you, it doesn't need to hold up the vote, I just need to have that for my record because it's not provided.
Okay, and I have it for you, Commissioner. That total amount is $163,589.75. This was approved previously, so that's an additional cost of the $23,313.
Okay, and then also, one other question on the signs, on item four. Is there a specific list that the board members can get to understand where these signs are gonna be placed?
Yes, we have that as part of the RFP, so we can certainly send that list over as part of the design.
Yes, that would be great, in particular because I'm asking, they had a really nice event this past week over at the Jim Bowie recent, and it was great, a great partnership between the school system and the county, but I've been over there so long and not even realizing, there's not even a sign front, so we need to add them in if we can.
We will make sure to get that over to you all tomorrow, which item, which areas were designated for the welcome signs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Those in favor, I. Opposed. It's unanimous.
Our next item is item number 18, discussion item, service of legal process for Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Reed.
And my apologies, I did not greet any of you all, and I first stood up here. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Board of Commissioners. Very, very briefly, I'm gonna talk a little bit about service of legal process. Oh, thank you, okay, so it's found in OCGA 911-4. And so, very quickly, process, meaning a lawsuit, is served by the sheriff in the county where the action is brought, or where the defendant is found, by a marshal, sheriff of the court, any citizen specially appointed by the court for that purpose, any person who's not a party, who's over 18, has been appointed by the court to serve process, either for that particular instance, or as a permanent process server, or a certified process server, which I won't go into the details of what that inquires. So that is found in OCGA 911-4C. So those are the people who are authorized to serve a lawsuit. The summons and complaint are served together, and they're set forth, served together as set forth in subsection E. There are many, many subparts of that, but I'm not gonna go into each one of those. The two that are most relevant to this board are section five, and I highlighted the two areas. So if it's against the county, municipality, city, or town, service is to the chairman of the Board of Commissioners, or to an agent authorized by appointment to receive service of process. The second, the one, oops, the second that's most relevant to this particular discussion is section seven, and all other cases to the defendant personally, and that is by leaving a copy at the defendant's dwelling house or usual place of where they live, with a person of suitable age and discretion, by delivering a copy of the summons and complaint to an agent authorized by appointment or by law to receive service of process. So obviously, those aren't underlined in the code, I just highlighted that so you can know what sections that apply, but that's basically it. This was a request from Commissioner Anderson to kind of let the board know, and the public know, how the board can be served.
Commissioner Anderson.
Hi, I want to speak on that, especially while I have the public here today. Even, I wanted everybody to know that, you know, when we're, when we're process served, or a process server comes to our homes and things of that nature, I have a concern. One of the concerns that I have is, you know, when the process server came to my home, he bammed on my door for five minutes, my cameras were blocked, I couldn't see who was outside. I'm a single, I'm a single woman, even though I'm getting married, but however, when you're outside bamming on my door, when you're outside, you know, I can't see who it is, because I do have a Ring camera, and then I have a regular camera, I have regular cameras all around my home, I'm not gonna answer my door for you. And so, we just need to make sure, and the same process server has come to the board, meaning to serve me as well, so, you know, I would feel more comfortable if it was done that way. And let me, let me finish, I'm not, because I know--
Stand back, I'm sorry.
And also, you know, there was an incident where I was coming out of my garage, and he jumped in the back of my car, and I could have put my, my car beeped, thank God it beeped, because if it hadn't, but, you know, he jumped in the back of my car, so I put my car in reverse, and I could have hit him. So, but again, when he, when they come, you can't see them on your Ring camera, you can't see them on your regular cameras, and so it becomes a, you know, it becomes, I just, just a dangerous process for that person coming up, because you don't know who he is, who that person is, they're not making it known who they are, and you can't view them on your cameras. So we need to come up with a process, because when things like that happen, you know, with us being single women and things of that nature, that's a problem. Also, we had another process service that was on the side of the building, and so as we were walking out, he sped off. So our sheriff's officers had to go, you know, were trying to see who it was, or if someone was trying to, you know, attempt to do something to us. So I just think that we need to come up with a process, because again, you know, our lives, you know, their lives could be put in danger, our lives could be in danger, we don't know what's going on, and I just think that, you know, the way it was done was just not right.
As it relates to any particular process, how they've done it, the certified process, depending on how they're designated, there could be complaints made to the person who's appointed them, if they've served in a certain particular way, but the service of process is so, they even have a section on dealing with how you serve someone in a gated community in state law. So the, the tendency is to lean towards people being able to serve, but again, as I've mentioned, not for you necessarily to decide now, but if you desire to have someone accept service for you where it's related to your, you know, your role as Commissioner personally, you can reach out to me and talk to me how you wanna do it. If we wanna do something formalized, we can do that, but I just wanted, again, just kind of give you what the parameters were under state law.
Yes, do we need to do that every year, or not? Because I have given you permission.
So if--
But it didn't work, because someone came to my door.
Okay, so it's sometimes, we can talk offline about, about that.
Yeah, pretty sure, because I've had him come to my house three times, but, yeah, offline. All right.
I just have one question.
Commissioner Davis.
So who is considered an authorized agent? Or do we have to specify, when we take, take office every year, who the authorized agent or agents shall be?
We can, you can designate me if you wanted to, but, but yes, it would just be someone who you designate as being the person who accepts service. The way that the law is, is that it, especially for corporations, they set somebody up to, you know, a corporation that accepts process for other corporations, so it makes it very broad. Individually, you all can determine who you want to be able to accept service for you, but that's gonna be, if you, depending on how you want to address that, I could talk to you individually about that process.
Still gonna be problematic, though, because if it's not a corporation, or if it's somebody in individual personal capacity, and somebody gives that service processor the suit to go serve, they might not know to come to you.
That's true.
And they still show up.
That's true, so we, there may be a time that we can, if you wanna do something formalized, where it's done through an ordinance, or through some sort of resolution, or through some sort of policy, that can be done. If, a lot of times, people will come to our office, and they may have service for everybody, I will, you know, a lot of times, I'll either reach out to you and say, "Do you want me to accept service for you in this particular matter?" If you wanna have it where I can accept service for you all, that, you know, I could talk with you individually, and I kind of get a sense of what the board wants to do, and then see what makes sense as far as formalizing that process.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, and that's what I was saying, I mean, like I said, I'll talk with you offline. I just wanted to make sure that we have a formal process in place, so we can make sure that, you know, when, like Chairman was saying, they could come anytime, but I think this process server, I mean, he knew, he had been, he had, he had served us here before, and so, again, we just need something formalized in place, and then we can move from there. So I thank you all for bringing that up as well. Did you?
Yeah, Chuck, if, if someone comes to our door, can we let them know that you are our service agent?
Sure.
Okay, so we don't have to open the door, we don't have to--
You can tell them that you can come serve, I mean, yes, and sometimes if they come to me first, I'll let them know that I can accept service for you.
That didn't work for the young man who came to my house twice, told me to go see Mr. Reed, and he came back. But at any rate, any other questions?
Yes, there are.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, thank you for taking the time to review this, but I'm gonna go ahead and deal with the elephant in the room. It's not just the fact that, about how to be served, it's, there's nothing within state law that states that any member of this board should be followed to their home after nine o'clock, at almost 10 o'clock at night, to be served a particular document that specifically with the last name Turner on it. So I'm not gonna dance around it, there are protocols, and even though I hear you're saying that you wanna talk to us offline, I disagree, because if it's something that can be discussed in executive session, then that's fine, but the laws are very clear, and those that are working with us understand those said laws. And so, I agree with us looking at specifically what the state says, along with the requirements, along with not only the state, but understanding what our county code speaks to. I don't think it's rocket science, and so I think that we need to come back before the board with something ironclad, so that everyone is in remembrance that the three items to be discussed in executive session, number one, are anything dealing with lawsuit, land, and then now we can add the security or personnel matter. So I believe it's very evident, and I'm glad this was read into the record, but I look forward to you all coming back with a plan that is lawful.
Any other questions?
Just one, what's the latest you can be served?
Whenever you can--
Whenever they can find you.
Whenever they can find you, because if somebody works at night, or someone works during the day, and, you know, whatever, the law, as I said, it tends, it is leaning towards people being served, not against, but it does set parameters for where you can be served, and if it's abusive, depending on who appoints them and how they're appointed, those concerns can be raised to the person who's appointing them. So if it's a judge, if a certified process server, and a person, you know, is they're abusive, you can raise it to that judge, and they may have some discretion as to whether they wanna move them off of the certified processor list.
I'm glad you brought that up, Mr.-- One more thing to read into the record is that evening, when this occurred, the process service specifically stated that the county refused service, so I want answers back to that as well, so let's dig a little deeper, and let's make sure that we abide by the laws. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? All right, well, let's move on to next.
Next item is item number 20.
All right, that's the board appointment to the Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities, Region Three Advisory Council is my selection--
Disabilities, Region Three Advisory Council is my selection. Madam Clerk, hold that till next meeting, please.
Okay, I'm clear. Mr. Chair, that concludes the agenda. Our next section is public comment. Citizens will be given two minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the board, with a total time of 20 minutes, public...
We can't, we can't hear.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the board, with a total time of 20 minutes for comments. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda, or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain the course demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residence, residency, excuse me, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks, or use abusive language when addressing the board.
All right, the first three names is where we left off at the last meeting. The first one is Kevin Barahana. Kevin Barahana.
Not here.
Atanya Fani. All right. Larry Gisantana.
I'm Clayton County resident, Fairfield subdivision. Good evening to the Board of Commissioners. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, I stand here on behalf of the residents of Fairfield subdivision. Uh, we're reaching out, uh, for assistance with the Lion Creek erosion problem that's adversely impacting our community and property. Uh, Lion Creek runs from an area near Thornton Road and Noah's Ark Road, and meanders through several subdivisions until it discharges into, uh, Lake Jodico, and subsequently over to Lake Spivey. Uh, over the years, during moderate rain events, uh, Lion Creek has become a raging stream of stormwater runoff. Uh, and this heavy stormwater runoff causes, uh, extensive creek, uh, creek bank erosion. Uh, trees fall, uh, highway, uh, curbs fail, uh, which impedes the flow of the water. Uh, when the water is blocked, it causes the creek to meander, uh, outside the original banks and causes more problems. Um, we're losing soil due to the erosion, and structures right now at Fairfield are in, in danger of, of collapsing. Uh, the stream ecosystem is also in decline. And by the looks of the turbidity of the creek, uh, my professional opinion is that the water is most likely, uh, impaired. Fairfield has, uh, done their due diligence by, uh, we've hired an engineer firm to assess the creek, and, uh, the results were revealed, uh, in a, uh, document, and, Mr. Chairman, it was sent to you, and to you, Chairman Davis.
I'm sorry, sir, your time is up. Did you receive the document?
Yes.
I got the email, but I don't recall seeing the document.
Yeah, the doc, the document's in the email.
Okay, I'll go back and look for that as well. But, uh, Commissioner Davis and I have been, uh, in discussion about ways that we can try to, uh, help out with that, with that issue.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think you've spoken to, or somebody's spoken to, the Water Authority and several other entities.
Yes, we had a meeting tonight, uh, this afternoon, a productive meeting, so, and I appreciate your time with that. And without, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, all the Commissioners for your service to Clayton County.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County, Madam Clerk, Commissioner, Chairman Turner. After my public comment, January 3rd, I spoke to Chief Staff Attorney Charles Reed. My issue was the term disparaging remarks, which is open to subjective interpretation. Commissioners only want compliments, not criticism. But, your opinion matters, let your voice be heard. Attorney Reed's presentation, January 10th, on Robert's Rules of Order and Point of Order shows Commissioners violating the rules. The proper use of Point of Order is Commissioners do not direct their remarks to the speaker. The Commissioner states Chairman's Point of Order. The Chairman recognizes the Commissioner, then asks, "What is your objection?" The Commissioner states their objection, and then the Chairman makes the ruling. June 7th, Commissioner Anderson violated Robert's Rules of Order by making a motion while a motion was pending, because she wanted to terminate the former CFO's contract. The Chairman told her, "That's not how we do things here." November 15th, Commissioner Franklin said, "So moved," before a motion was made. Then she violated Robert's Rules of Order by voting for additional funding for her legal expenses, conflict of interest. I began my last comment with, "If you don't know the rules, then it is incompetence. If you do not adhere to the rules, then you are corrupt."
Jackie Jones, I believe that is. Jackie Jones?
Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Offline comment at this time.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Uh, Timothy Von Dell, Jefferson.
Uh, good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, we, the citizens, have some deep concerns, I think, the people's business is not being adhered to. So, I'd just like to articulate a few that have come to mind. In light of the situation that's going on recently, I think that we sincerely need to look at hiring a PIO, because there's a lot of conflicting statements that's going out to the press, and of course, we are trying to move this county forward in the spirit of excellence, and I think the verbiage needs to be controlled to a degree. I'm extremely concerned about the Roman United deal on $800 million dollar mixed-use development. We haven't gotten any information back from yet, yet, in an update. We're also concerned about the model deal and its shortcomings with our money. And, uh, when will they come to, uh, and give us a presentation? And the number one concern is that I think that we have to raise our standards, because we are not applying any pressure to GDOT. Some of the areas on Tara Boulevard are complete, but the Silk Fence is still up, and that ties right into beautification. Do we have a beautification plan? Are we looking to partner with GDOT for shrubbery and curb appeal? Because at the end of the day, as we look to bring quality businesses here, we have to raise our standards. We have to raise our standards with code enforcement. We got to raise our standards, because right now, it appears that any entity come into Clayton County without any structure or demands. So, uh, this is all I ask, and my motto and all things, do everything in the spirit of excellence. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Good evening, um, Commission. I'm Donald D.C. Craddock, from Ellenwood, Georgia, District One. Um, I have concerns as a resident, just like, um, Mr. Von Dell. Monies, we pay for services when we pay taxes in Clayton County. And we have a county that, that does like it wants to, and, um, we don't have an accountability for the money that we spent. The Roman United deal, not a blade of grass has been moved in Lake, uh, Lake City. But yet and still, this company that you can't find a record on of them developing anything, got 600,000, almost $600,000 of the taxpayers' money. Uh, the Africa United, uh, Africa Children's Fund. I just talked to another county this morning, and they were bragging on how many citizens they helped, um, during the pandemic, with getting their rents paid and keeping them housed in their county. We were dead last. We don't know how many people were helped, we don't know how, where they spent the money, and, um, and we don't have a proper accounting of that. We elect officials to be at the vanguard of our community, to make sure that things like this do not happen. And what we have here are a bunch of people, um, who are just willy-nilly at the wheel, and it doesn't seem as if they are concerned about our financial well-being as a county. I, I'm a consultant to Gwinnett, Fulton, DeKalb, Douglas, uh, Chatham County, and Richmond County, as a political consultant. It hurts my heart that I live in Clayton County, and out of the 13 counties that are the major, uh, hubs in metro Atlanta, we're the only county that's a tier-one county. That means we're at the very bottom when it comes to economic development in metro Atlanta, and it's on the watch of this board.
I'm sorry, your time is up, sir.
Gwendolyn Gooden, Clayton County. Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman Turner. You claim you're trying to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, but you hire people who have questionable backgrounds. You bring them back with absorbing salaries, which their credentials do not justify. It's like hiring a fox to watch over the chicken coop. I am sure Clayton County could have found a more trustworthy and qualified person to work in our finance department. We will be filing an open records request on how many other applicants were interviewed for the position of Deputy Chief Financial Officer. Also, why are we paying to put any name, yet more interim sheriff's name, on the entire fleet of sheriff's vehicles, instead of correcting the unsafe and unsanitary conditions at the jail? Although the practice of adding the sheriff's name on the vehicles was started by the previous sheriff, it should be discontinued, because it's costing the tax, taxpayers an excessive amount of money. As I said before, money don't grow on trees, and this is definitely not a good look for Clayton County. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, Nikki Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commissioners, with all due respect, with the seriousness of all the previous speakers that have come before you, I defer the podium to the next legitimate speaker to address all their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners in your respectable place. I come to stand before you first and foremost to say thank you. You know, we all can have trash can bin to throw in a situation. But I always believe in the best solution to gather unity is a discussion and invite the Lord in it. I had to say that. But nevertheless, as a constituent today, thank you all so much for inviting me so many times to do the invocation. I was glad to see Bisha tonight, too. I was going to take up a collection, Mr. ... But nevertheless, um, through the journey that we are going in, I do want to say that Mr. D.C. got a point. We are tier-one, and we've been a tier-one too long. Some of the things we are doing, we have to move ourselves out of the way, because it becomes feelings and emotion, which cause us not to be solution-driven. I think that anything in this world could be guided with a guiding light from the Heavenly Father. I don't see why we need to be serving you all. I know the, uh, state regulate is to serve someone, catch them where you can. It's like a picture I watch to catch a thief. But we should be more calmly consider of our ladies and our genymous, to have a protocol that they are served decent and in order. Because I can promise you, if he had jumped out, or she had jumped out at my resident 10-80, he would probably be stinking. Because life, life can put you in a place to have to make a choice. So, in saying that, to move on, I want to thank each of you who came over to Seven Pillars Career Cabinet to read to our scholars. You all blessed they are, to see you all as, uh, elected officials to stand before them. I can't give you kudos enough. Let's put the fire out with unity, Mr. Chair.
Your time is up, ma'am.
God bless you.
Thank you.
All right.
Aretha Ensley.
Good evening, Aretha Ensley, Clayton County, Hampton. Um, and good evening to the Chair and other Commissioners. County Ordinance, Section 2-4 meetings, in part states, "No official action shall be taken by the Board, except in a meeting that is open to the public. Any three members of the Board shall constitute a quorum, except that a lesser number shall be sufficient to recess or re, recess or adorn, adjourn any meeting." But no official action shall be taken except from, except upon the affirmative vote of at least three members of the Board. Affirmative, of course, meaning expressing agreement with a statement or request, yes. Ms. Franklin's November 15th, 2022 actions, with a motion and voting for herself, an outside attorney at, attorney at a rate of $375 an hour, paid by our tax dollars, which created an or one conflict of interest and violated Code of Ethics, two, violated Section 2-4 meetings, because required th, three affirmative votes. Uh, November 15th, 2022, vote is null and void, which is actually, I guess, ultra, very, various, means beyond one legal power or attorney, authority, I'm sorry, required a, a abstention of Ms. Franklin, and required abstention of, by Chairman Turner, to prevent a future false allegation. And if there's any time, is there any, anything you would like to say about this particular item? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Karen Martin. Karen Martin. No. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. I yield the floor to you. Who do you have?
Good evening. I'd like to recognize, um, we have Pastor, uh, Arthur L. Powell, who is my pastor, um, for, in District One. Please give him a round of applause. Thank you for coming out, Pastor. Do we have any other pastors in the audience that need to be recognized? All right.
CJ Chiles. Good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out, and thank you for your prayers. We appreciate you.
All right, seeing there's no other business, I will take a motion to go into executive session for...
Litigation and personnel.
All right, is our motion going to executive session for litigation and personnel? Commissioner Anderson made the motions, there's a second.
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed? Mr. Reed?
All right, the first item I have, um, is a settlement in the matter of, um, Twan, I think that's correct, Wen, um, relating to an accident that occurred on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two at or near North McDonough Street and State Route one thirty-eight in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. And that is dismissing claims against Clayton County and, uh, Christopher Bowen. That's all I have on that.
All right, is there, is there a motion on this?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Uh, the next is, uh, a motion to, or a request to have, um, appoint counsel of Gerard and Davis in the matter of, uh, Bivins versus Franklin et al. Uh, in the amount of up to three hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour.
You wanna take those to death, huh?
No.
Separate.
Separate. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any questions?
Is, is this common to do?
Uh, to request for, uh, an hourly rate?
An increased hourly rate, yes, by our Comis, by the Commissioners.
Uh, yeah, well, I won't say common, but it's, it's up to the rates that the firm provides and whether those rates are, um, consistent with their expertise. And the Board has given itself the op, uh, the flexibility based on the experience of the firm, the matter that is, uh, at issue as to whether, um, hourly rates, uh, excess of the normal would be justified in a particular instance.
Okay, and how were, how were the initial base rates derived?
Well, some of it is based on the hourly, hourly rate that's being provided by our main outside firm. Um, but these rates are not in excess of what would be normal in the metro area.
For this type of case?
For this type of case, correct. With the firm of this experience. And I wanna make that clear, that this wouldn't necessarily automatically be the standard, but for a firm with this experience and background, um, this is not an unusual, um, rate.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Did Commissioner Franklin vote?
Yes, aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All right, it passes. Next.
Uh, the next is, um, a request for representation of Gerard and Davis in the matter of Brandon Turner versus, um, Felicia Franklin et al. Um, and this is for Gerard and Davis, if I didn't say that already, in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five dollars, um, per hour.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Uh, staying, one abstention, uh, one nay and three, uh, in favor of.
Uh, I've got, I have one, um, one other personnel item. Um, a request, uh, for a fifteen percent, uh, stipend, uh, for, uh, searing paralegal, Ayesha Hassan in the amount of seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars, uh, a year. Uh, and that is to be paid through, uh, ARPA funds, uh, through, um, for back work for clearing, uh, case backlog and that's just in this, into effect as long as the backlog is there or as ARPA funds are available.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Here we go, those in favor, aye.
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 It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman and Board, we ask the Board to take in consideration the appointment of our interim chief information officer, Mr. Ja, Ms. Jamie Motavo. Um, the date of effect will take effect Saturday, February fourth and the salary request that we're asking for is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two oh one, oh one. We ask that we put it in the form of a request to the Board.
And what's her title?
She's the interim chief information officer.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Doctor Anderson make a motion, is there a second?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis, are there any questions?
So who did you choose to make, to make the motion?
Doctor Anderson. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. She was the loudest. She was the loudest.
So moved.
All right, is that it?
Yep.
All business. All right, is there a motion to adjourn? I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.